The Finance Committee meeting and the Board of Selectmen meeting was opened at 6:03 PM. Please, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Black, this is your meeting.
All right, why don't you recess your meeting until after the public hearing?
The Board of Selectmen are going to recess their meeting until 7:30.
Or after the drawing.
Or after.
Or afterward, yeah.
Do you want to take a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting until 7:30 PM.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 All right, I entertain a motion to enter into the public hearing for the annual town meeting warrant.
Make a motion to open up the public meeting for the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome to the Finance Committee public hearing for the annual town meeting, as we have every year, a week before the meeting. The way we're going to run through this warrant is we're going to run through all of the articles. We're going to, there's another two financial articles after the budget article, so we're going to kind of take them out of order, so we're ending with the budget article. All right, everybody okay with that? Okay. So while we go through these, the Finance Committee is going to be making their recommendations on each of the articles as we go. So Article One, Monetary Increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item article or other funding source that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action relative thereto. This is basically a housekeeping article that basically protects the Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the general operation of the town meeting. It allows people to do all of their research prior to the meeting if they're going to have any recommendations to change anything on the budget. So I entertain a motion to accept that. Does anybody have any discussion on that one? Anybody that's been to a town meeting in the last few years is pretty familiar with this one, I think.
I would make a motion that accept Article One, Monetary Increases, the town warrant as written.
Second. Hey, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marbury?
Aye.
All right. Just so, in case you weren't aware, one of our Finance Committee members is actually in Bermuda, and she's called into the, to the meeting on the, on the com. Okay. Article Two, Bills from prior fiscal year. See if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Subsection 64, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds any sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years and/or take any other action relative thereto. Basically, the article seeks authorization from town meeting to pay prior year bills, which is required pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 64. Does anybody have any questions on that? Did we have any prior year past bills?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have $90 in prior year bills.
Okay. So obviously, at the town meeting, there'll be a motion relative to that. Okay. All right.
Given that, I'd make a motion to accept Article Two, Bills of Prior Fiscal Year, as written for the town warrant.
And I second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Article Three, Snow and Ice Deficit. To see if the town will vote to transfer inappropriate sum of monies from stabilization fund to fund deficits incurred with snow and ice budget per Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or take any other action relative thereto. This article seeks to transfer from the stabilization fund in order to pay the deficit in the snow and ice account, which can be lawfully overspent pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D. Two-thirds vote at the town meeting is required. Do we have a figure on that? Justin?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the snow and ice deficit is $123,716.86.
Any questions on that?
How much was it?
Make the motion to accept Article Three, Snow and Ice Deficit, as written for the town warrant.
I second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I think there's probably a delay from here to Bermuda.
From here, yes. It sounded blinding.
Yeah. All right, Highway Department, Chapter 90. See if the vote, the town will vote to accept and amend such sum or sums of money allotted to the, or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or in the, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for fiscal year 2018, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of said amounts or take any other action relative thereto. This is an annual article, and like I said, anybody that's been to town meetings is familiar with this one. Basically, gives us the authority to spend the chapter money, Chapter 90 money that, that the state allots for us. Are there any questions on that?
Is that supposed to be fiscal year 13 or 19?
This will be fiscal year 19 if it's, if it's on this warrant.
It needs to be changed up. It'll be, it'll be reflective in the motion. Okay?
Okay.
Make a motion to accept Article Four as written with the correction of 2018 to 2019.
I second. All right. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Cable license fees. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the PEG Access and Cable-related Funds Account a sum of $7,500 to forward to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district or take any other action in relation thereto. Again, this is an annual article. It allows us to transfer the $7,500 from our, our cable line item and give it to the school and allow them to use it for their library and media. Any questions on that? Nope.
Make a motion to accept Article Five, Cable License Fees, as written for the town warrant.
I second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Article Six, Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds, a sum of $15,000, to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits of retired employees or take any other action in relation thereto. The explanation is the article authorizes the town to partially fund in FY19 a previously created OPEB Liability Trust Fund to address the town's unfunded liability for employee retirement benefits. And we're still, with that number, we're still on good track to, to meet the state's requirements?
Uh, so we're still under, so the, the actuarial contribution calculation is $40,000 a year. The current liability is $360,000 a year.
Okay.
So we'll still be well under the defined contribution at $15,000.
Okay. But it's a start, right?
It's a start.
All right.
It's better than zero.
Better than zero. I hear that a lot tonight. Any, anybody have any questions on that?
Make a motion to accept Article Six as written, Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits for the town warrant.
I second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Article Seven, Capital Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of $15,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto. The article allows for strategic funding of capital projects, which have previously been funded out of the operational budget and is part of the town's ongoing goal to create a five-year capital plan in order to address the numerous capital improvement projects and equipment which exceed the operating budget. Anybody have any questions on that?
Make a motion to accept Article Seven, Capital Stabilization Fund, as written for the town warrant.
Second. Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Matching Grant Stabilization Fund. See if the town will vote to transfer from any funds a sum of money to be placed in the Matching Grant Stabilization Fund or take any other action in relation thereto. I'm going to allow these fine people over here to explain that one a little bit.
Yes, this past fall, the town voted to actually begin a matching grant fund stabilization item, and we were hoping to put money, small amounts, each year. Knowing the predicament that we're in at the moment, we put that in as a placeholder in hopes that somewhere along the way we'd be able to do something. But right now, there is no money attached to that, so once again, I can only look to explore grants that don't require a match. And by that, we were looking for small matches. But for now, it's, I don't expect us to have that money unless something changes.
So you know what we'll do is we'll, we'll take a ball on that, and then if it, if the Selectmen wish to strike that at the town meeting, then they can do so.
Sure.
Okay, make a motion to accept Article Eight, Matching Grant Stabilization Fund, as written for the town warrant.
I second. Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Article Nine, General Stabilization Fund. See if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of $75,000 to be placed in the stabilization fund or take any other action in relation thereto. This annual article allows for the transferring of funds to the stabilization fund of, as far, as part of the Finance Committee's ongoing goal to build up the town's reserves. The stabilization fund is a reserve fund that can be used for catastrophic or emergency events or when revenue sources are below prior year levels. A majority vote of town meeting voters is required to appropriate funds into the stabilization fund. Any questions on that? Mr. Correll?
Paul, I think one of the earlier articles you, is to take money from the stabilization to pay for the snowplowing.
It's two.
For the bills.
It's two different budgets, basically. We're taking from, from, from the stabilization to pay the budget, the bill, now, this year, and this is to put it in there from next year's revenues.
Okay, so we're taking out 130?
Twenty-three. 123, 7?
123, but we're only putting back 75.
That's correct.
So we're continuing to go down?
That is correct.
I think that's my point on this thing is, okay?
Yep. Anybody else?
Make a motion to accept Article Nine, General Stabilization Fund, as written for the town warrant.
I second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Article Ten, oh, we're going to skip over that one. We'll come back to it, I promise. Article Eleven is a school dis, school committee one. They can deal with that on their own. Article Twelve, Compensated Absences Fund. See if the town will vote to accept General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 13D, which authorizes the town to establish a reserve fund for future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due to an employee or full-time officer of the town upon the termination of such employee or officer's employment or take any other action relative thereto. This is a housekeeping item which allows the town to appropriate money for payment of future liabilities related to compensation absences. If I can explain this real quick, it's, if an employee leaves, and I think it's specifically a police officer, leaves, we have to pay them out their unused sick and holiday pay. And, and, not holiday pay, uh, sick and vacation time. So this establishes a fund to allow us to do that because we're on the hook for that anyway, so we might as well put a little bit of money aside so we're not scrambling at the last minute to do it. Does that sound about right?
That's it.
Okay.
Make a motion that we accept Article Twelve, Compensated Absent Fund, as written for the town warrant.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Capital School Projects. To see if the town will vote to transfer from Townwide Capital Fund the sum of $100,000 to fund the costs of replacing both the fire suppression panel system at the Millville Elementary School and the fire detection panel system at the BMR High School or take any other action in relation thereto. The article provides funding of the two essential public safety capital projects involving the elementary and high school buildings. Local and state inspectors have recently indicated both of these safety systems must be replaced before the start of the next school year or the buildings will fail inspections and the district will be prohibited from allowing students and the public to enter the buildings. So the distribution is $40,000 for our elementary school and our 27.2% portion for the high school comes to $60,000, so for a total of $100,000. Any questions on that?
Won't come along again? I was not over again?
Our, our portion is $60,000 of that, which, which represents 27.2% of the total cost of that project.
Paul, where account would that come from?
The Townwide Capital Fund that we set up through the sale of the fire engine.
Oh, okay.
Last year.
For just such emergencies, unfortunately. All right.
Make a motion that we accept Article Thirteen, Capital School Projects, as written for the town warrant.
I second it. It's moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I think that was it for financial stuff. Now, back to the one we were all waiting for. Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest compensation for town officers and provide for the reserve fund in fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, or take any other action relation thereto. Okay. The way I'd like to do this, we'll call it a practice for the town meeting. So I'm going to read the total amounts for each department. If anybody wants to place a hold on that, we'll say hold, and we'll double back to that in order that they're presented. So if you say hold and Mike over here, we'll write your name down and, and what line item it was, and then we'll double back. If you'll notice, on the far left side of this budget worksheet here, are line item numbers. So for everybody's ease in following along, if you're speaking of a specific one of those, just reference the line item number, and we can go back and discuss it, and everybody will be able to find it real easily. Yes, James?
Can I, and, and this may have been explained in another meeting, and I apologize if it has been, but there are three different columns.
Okay.
The significance of them.
The yellow column was the one that the Finance Director and the Town Administrator proposed as a budget. The?
Mr. Chair, there's, there's our color coded.
So first column?
Oh, first column. Sorry. Mine's pretty colored.
Ours are not.
The yellow one on my copy is the Town Administrator-presented budget or proposed budget. This middle one, which is, we're still debating on what color that is, is, um, yeah, percent, is the, is the Finance Committee's suggested with override budget, and the one to the far right is the Finance Committee's presented budget or proposed budget without an override. So basically? Do you have questions? Yes, Ms. Bowen?
Clarification, why are we even considering the override budgets since that has been defeated?
Because the Selectmen, who are the ones that have the authority to put a question on a ballot with regards to an override, have not taken the vote yet. They will be taking that vote tonight on whether to put that on the ballot. So as of right now, we're presenting two different budgets because there's still, at this point in time, still two possibilities.
Okay.
Okay? Mrs. Ray, do you?
I'm back again, sorry. Is there a possibility for a proposed override that is less than the original one? I mean, so?
Yes.
Thanks, Paul.
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
I promise.
Okay.
Which is exactly why the Finance Committee made our recommendations accordingly. Because you'll notice that the, that the initial budget that was put out was with a, with a higher deficit number. So the Finance Committee put a, a number together that came to a deficit number that was a little bit less, significantly less, actually. And that obviously would translate to a lower override number. Okay? All right. We're going to go through the middle one first, all the way through. Then we're going to go through the right one, all the way through. Okay? Town Moderator, $100. Board of Selectmen, $61.16. Town Administrator, $89.296. Finance Committee Reserve Fund, $35,000. Sorry, I missed one. Finance Committee, $135. Reserve Funds, $35,000. Town Accountant, $69,100. Board of Assessors, $70,730. Treasurer Collector, $86,490. Legal, $45,000. Technology, $25,150. Town Clerk, $36,146. Conservation Commission, $1,600. Planning Board, $19,983. Zoning Board, zero. Town Hall, Old and New Buildings, $148,512. Annual Report, $2,000. Police Department, $557,156. Fire Department, $309,336. Building and Zoning Enforcement, $54,375. Electrical inspections, and you'll see gas and plumbing inspections and electrical inspections have been zeroed out because they've been encompassed into the previous number. Civil Defense, $850. Animal Control, $10,250. Tree Warden, $10,500. Public Safety Communications, $55,848. MES Grounds Maintenance, $50,159. Blackstone Valley Tech, $397,215. Norfolk Agricultural, $175,046. Tri-County Vocational, $50,990. Blackstone Millville Regional, $2,879,977. Keefe Tech, $30,082. Highway Department, $139,227. Highway Snow and Ice Removal, $150,000. Townwide Fuel, $24,000. Highway Street Sweeping, $14,000. Stormwater Management, $23,000. Public Street Lighting, $22,500. Did we reduce that even or not? I thought we did both sides on that. You think we just did the override? Okay, all right. Public Street Lighting, $22,500. Board of Health, $39,080. Council on Aging, $47,796. Veteran Services, $10,000. Library, $43,189. Recreation, $5,500. Memorial Park, $5,050. Historical Commission, $675. Memorial Day Celebrations, $400. Flag Warden, $350. Debt Service, $179,135. Regional Retirement, $156,998. Unemployment Insurance, $9,000. Health Insurance, $91,101. Dental Insurance, $6,615. Medicare Fringe Benefits on behalf of Employees, $15,375. Other Insurance, $93,600. Transfer to Other Funds, $50,000. For a grand total of $6,343,733, which translates to a deficit of $382,183. All right. Seeing as how there was no hold, so I entertain a motion from the Finance Committee to submit the override budget, or I mean, the override contingent budget?
Make a motion to accept the 2019 FinComp override budget as presented.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay. Yes, Ms. Bowen?
Explain to me how you can accept that budget based on an override that has not been. I mean, I thought the responsibility of the Finance Committee was to present a budget based on, a balanced budget based on the revenue at hand. That's what I thought the responsibility was. Now, why, why you're accepting this budget and you don't have the override?
Not yet. There's still a possibility of it happening.
But it isn't here now.
You're right. That's why it's a contingent budget.
Why did that, the, the Finance Committee, why did you just accept that?
Because it is a budget contingent upon there being an override.
Maybe you should add that to the, to the motion?
I think our motion stands just the way it is.
Well, this is not.
Thank you.
This is not the clear budget.
You're right. The next one is.
Okay, so that one, you know, we can plan that one.
Okay. And that one's still $221,000 in deficit.
It's a lot.
Really?
What's the deficit, Mr. Chairman?
The deficit for the with override budget is three hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Thank you.
Yep. Three eight two one eight, it's the last page.
Middle column.
The very last page.
The gray one.
The gray, the gray one. Yeah, color gray. Okay.
Is there somewhere on this document to show us how much funds are actually available?
I think it's on the last page, you know?
It's not, it's not actually printed on here, no. The, um, I can tell you what it is though.
Well, you'll be able to subtract that.
Yeah, if you, if you do the math, um... So total proposed revenue right now is five million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars.
Does that include free cash, assesses overlays, ambulance receipts?
This does not include any one-time revenue sources. This is just balanced on the tax rate and local receipts.
Okay.
All right. Now, the column to the far right. Couple of things to notice in this budget. In either budget, there is no trash collection. That's why the Board of Health budget was dropped so drastically. There was not trash pickup in either of these versions. You will also notice in the no override budget that there are no stipends for people that serve on boards or committees whatsoever. And there's a few other changes that you'll notice as we go through. We spent eight hours on this budget coming up with these two, with these two, and we went line by line, Justin can attest to that, and literally budgeting to the dollar of the things that are required to run this town. Our criteria, our main criteria was health and safety of the citizens and revenue generating. If it wasn't health and safety related, or related to generating revenue, or collecting revenue, or revenue related, then it was fair game in our block.
Contractually obligated?
And contractually obligated. So this one, I'll go a little slower because I'm sure there will probably be more holds in this one than there were on the last one. Town Moderator, sorry Les, zero. Board of Selectmen, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Town Administrator, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Finance Committee, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Finance Committee Reserve Fund, thirty-five thousand. Town Accountant, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred. Board of Assessors, sixty-eight thousand, oh sixty-five. Treasure Collector, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven. Legal, forty-five thousand. Technology, twenty-five thousand, one fifty. Town Clerk, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six. Conservation Commission, nine hundred. Planning Board, sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. Town Hall, I'm sorry, Zoning Board of Appeals, zero. Town Hall, old and new buildings, hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve. Annual Report, one thousand. Police Department, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. Fire Department, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. Building and zoning enforcement, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. Civil Defense, eight hundred and fifty. Animal Control, ten thousand, two hundred and fifty. Tree Warden, ninety-five hundred. Public Safety Communications, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven. M E S Grounds Maintenance, fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine. Blackstone Valley Tech, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and fifteen. Norfolk Aggie, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, forty-six. Tri-County Vocational, fifty thousand, nine hundred and ninety. Blackstone Millville Regional, two million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven. Keefe Tech, thirty thousand, eighty-two. Highway Department, one thirty-eight, seven sixty-four. Highway Snow and Ice Removal, hundred and fifty thousand. Townwide Fuel, twenty-four thousand. Highway Street Sweeping, fourteen thousand. Stormwater Management, twenty-three thousand. Public Street Lighting, twelve thousand, five hundred. Board of Health, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty. Council on Aging, fifteen thousand, three hundred and ten.
Bone.
Who's that held by?
Name please?
Ellen Bone.
Ellen Bone.
Mrs. Bone. I knew it by the voice, too. Uh, Veteran Services, seventy-three hundred. Library, thirteen thousand, twenty. Recreation, five thousand, five hundred. Memorial Park, five thousand, fifty. Historical Commission, six seventy-five. Memorial Day Celebration, zero. Centennial Celebration, zero. Flag Warden, zero. Debt Service, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five. Regional Retirement, one fifty-six, nine ninety-eight. Unemployment Insurance, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and two. Health Insurance Fringe Benefits on behalf of Employees, ninety-one thousand, one oh one. Dental Insurance Plan, six thousand, six hundred and fifteen. Medicare Fringe Benefits, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Other Insurance, ninety-three thousand, six hundred. Transfer to Other Funds, zero. Grand Total is six million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. For a deficit number of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. We had one hold. Ms. Bowen, would you like to come up and speak on your hold, please? No, I'll be up here at the microphone. Now, there are all the folks at home to hear you too, right?
Well, they heard me for the past three months. Thank you. Okay, my, uh, is this on?
Yep.
It doesn't amplify, it just takes in your voice.
All right. My, my only question is that you have, you have taken away our Director and the van driver, but you have kept money in there for electric and for the heat. And, but my question now is, are you leaving the, the building open for the seniors to go in when they want?
I would think that would be contingent on a building use request.
Okay, but, well, I think the building has been used by the municipal departments at various times. Is that gonna continue?
I would, I would think so.
Put it back?
No, too loud.
Now, nobody wants to hear me, right? Okay. But that is, that's my serious question, is that it's going to remain open at the, to the tune of fifteen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars with the heat and all. And as I say, the municipal departments in this town have utilized that building a number of times during the, and they may, in, in the future. So my question would be, would the seniors also be able to, to use the building?
I would defer to the Selectmen on that one because that would be something that they would be putting in place.
Okay, because we do have a senior club and there, there are a number of activities that don't require any payment.
I believe the last time we went through this, the seniors were still able to use the building for their programs. There was just, we weren't, and the same with the library, we just weren't providing the funds for staff.
Okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to know. That clarifies it. Thank you very much.
And just to, to clarify, if, in case anybody had any questions about the, you know, leaving the heat on and the electricity on, in order to maintain a building, if, if we shut all that stuff off and mothballed it, that, you know, you'd get rodents in there, you'd get, so if you notice, we kept, we kept pest control, we need to keep the lawn in good repair, we need to keep the heat on, we need to keep the electricity on to, so that the building doesn't fall apart. So that's the only reason why those are kept.
That makes sense to me. So, do, do we now have to wait for clarification from the Board of Selectmen as far as my question, or?
I think we have to wait and see what town meeting votes.
But I mean, as far as if it, if you're getting rid of the Director and the, I think the use is still available.
I think the previous protocol sets that in place.
Okay.
All the same insurances will be held in place for people to go in and out of the building? Is all that insurance gonna stay as is?
That's what we did previously.
Okay. That's just important.
So I would assume that would probably be a future agenda item based upon the town meeting vote.
Say that again?
It'll be a future Selectmen item based on town meeting vote on how those buildings are being operated and used. And the last time we sat with the Council on Aging and the Library Trustees on how that would look with their volunteers.
Yeah, because we do have quite a few.
I would think you'd have to put together some standard operating procedures, protocol for...
Which we could do, but I mean, I have to clarify if we're gonna be able to enter the building.
I would, I would think that the, the past dictates that that would be true.
We can kind of hope so. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Two quick questions, Paul. On the unemployment insurance, it went from nine thousand to twenty-three thousand. Is that for potential layoffs?
Yeah, when you're, when we're reducing staff, then we're on the hook for the liability of the unemployment insurance.
And the second question, on the Highway Department's budget, I don't see a line item for road maintenance. Did I miss that one?
It's actually put in, um, together with, I think it says highway, not supplies.
Public Works Supplies.
Public Works Expenses, or something like that.
Public Works Supplies, I believe it was. And then professional services, I think it was a combination of the two.
Right. We had reduced that by...
So the supplies are the stuff and the, and the services are the...
It's the one that went down by fifty thousand dollars. The Highway Survey had asked it to be at a hundred thousand dollars. And, um...
You cut it down to thirty-one.
Yes. Yes, line two fifty-nine. It would be highway, public work, supplies. Started out at a hundred and one thousand, it was dropped by fifty thousand, back to what it was this past year, basically.
Yeah, we level funded it.
Even when I was there, I mean, the Highway Survey has, has really been given a haircut. It's been his budget that we cut. And I think, seeing what's been going on in the town in the last couple of years and the work he's been doing with nothing, I mean, he's doing an excellent job and, and he really should be commended because we've been handcuffing him for many years on this thing, on it. And I, I just wanna appreciate the work you're doing. And the money that we get for chapter ninety...
Evelyn.
That is a reimbursement, correct?
Yes.
So we have to front the money to do that.
Yes, we do.
So, I know we've got an article and a warrant. Is there a plan in place to be able to, uh, however we're gonna do it, so he's able to spend that money and then, or, or we can spend the money and get that reimbursement quick from the state? Is there a plan in place?
The short answer is yes. I couldn't describe the plan to you.
Okay.
The short answer is yes, there is a plan in place.
And actually, Rich, since I've come in, we have had the state in, because they used to be in the past, some lack of clarity on how they actually do that as a community. And we met with the regional directors and we have that situation down pretty much passed, so that it is a quick turnaround, so that we're not on the hook for any extended liability. And, and we've been maximizing that with grant money as well, so, but our Highway Survey has become very adept at that process.
And lastly, on the Highway Survey, the number he presented for snow and ice, we had kind of a crazy winter this year, and I noticed the number that he presented as additional bills was a lot lower, I think, than previous years. And so the manner in which they're conducting business is what the town really needs and...
What, what we did on that, what we did on that is, is our accountant took a ten-year average and balanced it out because we've been funding that classically low, as you know.
Yep.
And then having to make it up at the town meeting. So we're, we're remedying that, we're adding to that so that we don't have as much of a hit when we come to town meeting to, to fund it.
But I'm saying, I'm saying the bills that are coming in are better than they've been in, in a long time, and that's good for the town because of his efforts.
And sometimes, I mean, a, a, you know, a winter can be tougher when it's a, a bunch of little spitty icy storms than one big monster storm.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments about these budgets? Wish you had held your line, I had them...
I just have a question. I know. I just have a question on, on here, on, you, you've given us money for library dues and membership. If we, we have this budget, we lose our certification again. Can we take that twenty-one hundred and use it for something else?
That would be a question above my pay grade.
So, I think the answer is yes. I mean, the, what came up in the discussion was, we didn't know even if the library, if you lost certification, if you still need to keep C W Mars around for...
Right.
Something.
Right. Okay.
So, you know, we erred on the side of caution and that we didn't know what the impact of that would be.
Okay.
So I guess the answer would be if the C W Mars did not need to stay in place, then I guess the short answer would likely be yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you know the answer, whether the C W Mars needs to stay in place?
I can't remember.
Could you get that to us, please, at some point?
I don't want to.
I know, I know. Monday. I don't either.
I had just a question about a small item here. You've taken away the van drivers, but you've given for COA vehicle repairs and maintenance, three hundred dollars. I would assume then that that's just to register the van, or, because without state-certified drivers, we can't drive that van. The state requires us to have drivers with certain training.
We talked about that, and, and the fact is, anybody that does their own vehicle maintenance will tell you that, that oil changes and such happen over time also, not just mileage.
A couple oil changes, okay.
So it's to, it's to keep the van in good working order.
Okay. Even though it's not gonna be driven?
For now.
Okay.
Still an asset.
Still an asset that we have to maintain.
Right. Okay.
It's still to be registered and insured though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Entertained a motion to present this budget at town meeting?
Make a motion to accept the 2019 FinCom no override budget at town meeting.
One second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody have any other questions about the town meeting warrant?
Never mind, I won't say anything. So, let me understand that there's a potential that the Board of Selectmen may propose an override, not the same override originally proposed.
Correct.
But a lesser amount. Do we, do we...
Would you like to know what that is?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm glad you asked. What the Finance Committee is recommending and what our Finance Department is also recommending at the same time is a one million dollar override total. And that is with the infusion of the deficit, it'll be front-loaded with what the deficit is on this budget, barring, barring any changes at town meeting.
So one million, front-loaded to the three hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three?
Yes.
Yes? Yes. If an organization wanted to amend... If an organization wanted to amend that override, is that possible on the floor? No, I know it's a ballot. I know the override is a ballot, but amend the amount, is that possible? In other words, there's a warrant item that says we have to say where the money's coming from if we want to change the money. If the money is coming from an additional override, does it need to be separate? Can the override being proposed be amended? What are the process or procedures?
You cannot earmark money for an override. It goes to the general fund. All you can do is really say that it's going to the fiscal operations. So, the other thing to bear in mind is that the FinCom is presenting an unbalanced budget without having an override. So, that part of it, as we go forward, is going to get more defined with time. But, no, you can't earmark that in advance.
You can't really change the override number.
Can you propose your own?
No. Only the Board of Selectmen are allowed to put an election warrant. It's considered an election warrant. They've always been empowered with that, no matter whether it's for voting for an override, or, or voting for some other matter. It's empowered for them, but especially for two and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bowen?
I don't know how many questions I have, but if, if the Board of Selectmen, they do have that power, they have the power to suggest a ballot override question, then why in heaven's name did we go through all of this two weeks ago?
You're asking the wrong person.
Well, I just want it out there. I mean, that was almost a waste of a lot of people's time, and a lot of paper, and a lot of other things.
Actually, I, I think it was not a waste of time.
The Board of...
I think so, and a few others. Well, would you like to, we'll hear the answer. $1.8 million is absolutely what the Finance Committee is facing with a school-certified budget at 18 percent. We have gone into this exercise of trying to understand what would be our obligations with all of the things that we've discussed line item by line item. You cannot change the certified budget. It's up to the school board to do that, but we knew going in that that actually would not only put us upside down, but it would mean that we would need a $1.8 million override. We know that that's extremely high. This board erred on the side of understanding that this has been a long structural deficit over many years that now has gotten to the point where it's a crisis. To educate the public about the fact that we have been using one-time revenues every year to balance the budget, it has meant that that structural deficit is now up to a million dollars, over a million dollars, if we give that school 18 percent. The selectmen felt that it was important to find out if the public really understood, understood about the structural deficit. Regardless of if that vote came out yes, 121, and no, 88, or as it did, 88 yes and no, 121. The, the actual responsibility of placing an article to oversee the well-being of this town always rests with the selectmen. But what is that number that's going to be palatable? You don't put a number out there that is going to fail, and I think that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee through all of their meetings understood that perhaps the public didn't understand how bad this structural deficit has, has amounted to over many years of patching and using one-time reserves. So, we're here at this point in juncture, because we only can look at the numbers coming in and the certified budgets that we have, but we needed to make sure that the public understood this. If you did no override with one...
Excuse me, now, are you saying that the public is not...
You can't interrupt, that's why.
No, I know, but are you saying that they don't understand?
I don't, at this point in time, I think 33 votes to, to understanding meant that a lot of people now do understand, and I think this Board of Selectmen understands $1.8 million is too much, and we all thought that. But we also needed to understand that if we have to present a balanced budget with an 18 percent school budget, it would mean that we would need a $1.8 million override. So, you have to float it to the people, so that they understand what's at stake. And I think we did that.
And you did that at the special meeting?
Yes, we did. And we, and I think the Board knows $1.8 is too high.
That's all I needed to know, if that was necessary. Thank you for the long answer.
You're welcome.
As usual.
You're welcome.
That's uncalled for. Sandra?
I just want to ask one question. If the selectmen put the ballot, put the override on the ballot, are you keeping the same tax rate?
Throw that green sheet away.
Why?
Throw it away. What, what a $1 million override translates to? If it's $1 million in full, it translates to, for the average household, which you fall in that category, $924 a year, $77 a month.
What was that number again, please?
$924 a year, which translates to $77 a month.
And then add trash on top of that?
There's no trash.
No, that's what I'm saying, but every household has to add trash on top of that.
Within your own budget, you'd have to do that, yes. Something you'd have to figure out.
All right, I, I just, math has never been my strong point. What I want to know, plain and simple.
How much it's going to cost you.
From the $16.50 that we have now per thousand, the first year of the override would be $20 and whatever.
No.
But that's, all right.
That was the old, that was the old override.
Okay, so, what would it go up to?
The $1.8 million override. What does it do now?
So, for FY19, based on that, that deficit, for FY19, the change would be $1.26 to the rate, or $315 for next year. Or the total of... So, the rate would be $17.82 for FY19.
$17.82 for '19. Do we even want to know what it's going to be after the $17.82? Do you have for each year afterwards?
So, so, we don't, so, I mean, we don't necessarily know what would go up, you know, after that. I mean, the total you would ever get to is nine, is, is for a million dollars, is the $19.96.
It's the highest.
That would be the highest.
That would be the highest.
$19 what, please?
$19.96 would be the highest when the full override was in.
It would take a long time to get there.
And that's close to, like, Blackstone is now at $19.49.
If ever.
Okay. So, will that be made available for May 14?
Before that.
Before that?
Yeah.
Okay.
They still have to have the Board of Selectmen consider this. They might suggest something different.
Okay. I can take a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did we lose Aubrey? Aubrey, do you want to still listen in on the selectmen's meeting, or?
You close, Joe, as the hearing recesses.
We close the public hearing. We close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the FinCom meeting. To adjourn.
All right, I'll second that. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Selectmen will now open our meeting.
We have to wait till 7:30? Still have a half an hour?